All right, everyone's in from the waiting room.
Okay, thank you Shane. So being six thirty, November first, twenty twenty-three and have inquiry. I'll go to item one and I'll call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order this evening. And before we go to item two, public hearings, I'll read a brief. Memo in regard to the open meeting law and Zoom meetings. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the provisions of the open meeting law pursuant to the governor's approval of supplemental budget bill. Temporary provisions pertaining to the open meeting law have been extended to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Specifically, this further extension allows the public bodies to continue to hold meetings remotely. Without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location. And to provide adequate and alternative access to remote meetings. The language of the extension does not make any substantive changes to open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions. Regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Members of the public are encouraged to participate remotely. And shall address the questions through the chair of the board. Well, this evening Shane O'Brien is going to be our host. Additionally, we should. Note, note the, the following. If public, if, if members of the public participate in a meeting remotely, the following requirements shall apply. Please state your name and address for the record. Members must clearly be audible to each other and to members of the public at all times. We will be taking all roads, all votes this evening via roll call. The following Bridgewater Planning Board members are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Driscoll, the Chair. Mr. Raymond Agemian, Mr. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair. Mr. Stephen Geller, Ms. Astrid Rojas. And we've two alternate members this evening, Ms. MJ Spagon and Mr. Ted Haley. During the meeting again, we'll be taking all votes as roll call votes. The Bridgewater Town staff that is with us this evening are Mr. Robert Rulie, the Community Economic Development Director. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the Town Planner. Mr. Tristi Jane, the Assistant Town Planner. And Mr. Greg Tansey, the Town Engineer. At this point, everyone's mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting and as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing, which we have two this evening allows for public comment. We ask you to use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name, your address and your question. The Chair or the Host will recognize your questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature under this participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the Chair, Chair or the Host recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hands. So we'll go to item two. We do have a public hearing this evening at one sixty-eight, one eighty, two thirty-two and two forty Broad Street. I'm going to turn it over to. Michael McDonald, the Vice Chair, to conduct this meeting as I have a conflict. And. I will recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. All right, we'll move right along to the applicants and they may start when they already.
All right, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Steven Meltzer here on behalf of the applicant. Edgewood Development Company with me tonight is Jerry LaRusso and Joe Bartuga. And also we have John Cusick from Bowler Engineering. And I do see Tom Perkins, who is a representative of the owners of the Perkins Foundry. Also out there. Representing the, the owners. What I'd like to do tonight, Shane, I guess I'm going to try and share my screen so I can share my slides.
Good to go.
Uh, okay. And, and Shane, I, I'm not sure. I almost didn't recognize you.
Oh, the lack of beard.
Lack of beard.
It'll grow back.
All right, so does everybody, is everybody seeing my screen? Let me.
Yes.
Okay. So let me just move along, so. I want to go through some of the, the updates and changes tonight. I'm going to try and be as brief as possible. Other than a quick review of what we talked about last time, I'm going to try and keep this to new information and. New. New updates. So again, the hope tonight is I'm going to run through the summary of the design improvements that we talked about last time. I'm going to go through the standards and criteria for approval. But I'm not going to go through all of them. You have a memo on that, but I do want to talk about. About how we. How we meet or exceed those standards. I'm going to talk about the countervailing mitigation measures that we have to offer, things that we talked about. We had a meeting last week with Shane. And Bob and with Sristi to discuss those issues. I'm also going to talk about how our plan and our project really is consistent with all of the Bridgewater planning goals as they've been stated in the. In the planning documents that you've produced over the last decade. And then we have the final or the final site plan, which we can run over some of the changes that we've made to that. Again, they're not, they're not big changes, but they're little changes consistent with our discussions. Last meeting and with the staff. Last week. So the stuff that we talked about last week, we incorporated a significant number of walking trails around the site. And pocket parks on along those walking trails as well as a larger park in the front of the site. We have incorporated the onsite community garden. Hopefully that would be something very successful and, and that the. The folks who are living there and even folks who aren't may be able to enjoy. We have created that green space. That's the park in front and the path to Broad Street out in front of the, the site. We refine those front buildings to create the town center feel and look for those buildings. We did the redesign of the, the residential building, reducing the overall height to fifty-five feet, eight inches. And redesign of the north entrance building eliminated a drive-through exit, making it. The drive-through internal to the site. And we've reduced it from a three lane to a two lane drive-through. And we talked last week about, and again, this is a mitigation or an offer for mitigation. The crosswalks that we will be happy to. To offer in front of the site over Broad Street. And again, that may be something that has to be TBD as far as exactly where they go and, and we're okay with that as well. I think that, you know, there's. There's discussions about what's going to happen across the street and we want to make sure that whatever we do as improvements. Works well and fits in with that. So. Again, this is the, the south side front building. We do have updated elevations, which I'll show you before we're done tonight. This is, we've, we've refined this and we're pretty well. Satisfied with, with the design of this building and the north building as well. That's the north building. It's still showing there. We haven't had the updated elevation renderings done, but we do have the updated elevations and I'll show you that. There's three drive-through showing here and one of those is eliminated. And then the back building, we are tweaking some of the colors to make it look even better than this. And again, those will show in the elevations that I show you before we're done. Now, I, I want to move to the, the criteria and standards in your bylaw. Shane had prepared a memo for the board members. In which he went through all of those, he stated what our responsibilities are and we. Gave a response which should be in the record to each and all of those. But there's a, quite a myriad of requirements for this project. And they're contained in six point three, nine point six three and nine point six four, nine point six six, nine point six eight, ten point five two, ten point six seven. And all in all. I counted that there are fifty-nine different standards. Or criteria that we have to meet. And. We meet or exceed and in some cases well exceed fifty-five of those fifty-nine. We have four of those that we're asking the board to consider either exceptions or waivers for. Oh, and we think they're appropriate for the site for a number of reasons, including the, the, the economic conditions. The site conditions, meaning the shape and topography of the site as well as the soil conditions. And by the way, I want to share in addition that as of four fifty-one tonight, less than a couple of hours ago, we did get. From DEP, the provisional approvals for the work with respect to the foundry sand that's onsite. And we're, there, that's now in a twenty-one day. Comment period that we've, I did share that was with Shane and, and Bob. I'm sure they haven't had a chance to, to look at them yet because I haven't. But some of the, the restrictions and constraints that we have on the site are related to, to the work that we have to do for DEP. With respect to the, that, that foundry sand. So we're asking for waivers with respect to the loading requirements, waiver for having more than one building on, on one lot. Exceptions for residential uses on the first floor of building one. And of course, we've talked about a lot, the exception for a reduction from the thirty percent commercial ratio. And again. Nobody's building brick and mortar anymore. Commercial space, not just in Bridgewater, but all over the Commonwealth, the Northeast. Is, is vacant and vacancy rates are rising. So we, we, the last thing we want to do is. For ourselves as well as for the town of Bridgewater is put in. Space that does not get leased out and remains vacant. It's not going to be good for the project or good for the, the town. In exchange for the consideration that we're asking for with respect to those waivers and exceptions, we. We are offering that we can make ten percent of the residential units. Eighty percent AMI workforce housing and affordable housing. We talked with, with Shane and Bob and Sristi about. Sidewalk improvements on Broad Street down to Styles and Heart. We're happy to participate in that. I, we understand also that the town is working on obtaining and will be making a. Parking area for Styles and Heart and we're happy to participate and help out with the paving. Of that parking lot. We already mentioned and talked about the crosswalk improvements on Broad Street. We have had for some time, we've worked in the public canoe landing in the parking area for access to the town river. And if we look closely, we actually have an overabundance of, of parking by about. Thirty to forty extra parking spaces on the site. We could eliminate those, but I think it's probably better off both for the folks who are using the site and for the downtown to. Leave some excess parking. So we, we think that's also a, a benefit to the, to the town and to the downtown. And the walking trails and sidewalks on the site, I asked the, the civil engineers to, to tell me. What, how many linear feet do we have? And they calculated that we have approximately a mile of walking trails and sidewalks on the site, which. Again, I think that's going to be fantastic for the residents, but. Great also for members of the community who want to come and, and walk and use the site as, as a, as a walking area. So I'm going to go through some of the things that I read in some of your documents. The first one being the downtown revitalization plan. And I think that, that we kind of, not kind of, but we, we, we definitely contribute positively to all of the goals that are in that. Vitalization plan. The polls show that the community highly values the central square area and Broad Street as a connecting spur. So we're trying to develop that so that we're bringing in new community members. And, and really be a catalyst for building up that area. The most important target for downtown are residents that are either starting their career or retiring, ranging in age from thirty-five to sixty-five and older. Education is above average with the median household income of over forty-four or five. More than sixty percent rent in multi-unit buildings or bid or high-rise buildings. This market segment has a lifestyle that reflects their uninhibited stage of life, participating in outdoor exercise and leisure activities. We think that our project contributes or would contribute to the, the housing and, and commercial uses. For those folks who fit exactly in that demographic. The purpose of mixed-use development is allow for a vibrant walkable downtown with additional small restaurants, retailers and cafes combined with new opportunities for housing. That respond to changes in market demand. Again, exactly what we have planned for this project and what this project will bring to the downtown. And again, just these quotes are from your plan that you spend time and money developing for your. For targeting growth in the, in the town of Bridgewater. Reinvestment in downtown is to be encouraged with implementing regulations. You have some of those. We're trying to take advantage of those regulations. I know that Bob Rulie is working on. On a form-based code which may make it better, but we have, we have what we have to work with and. We're trying to make our project fit within that and within the, the demands of the market at the same time. And that's why we, we, we need it to be included, include the, the waivers and exceptions. Regulations and design standards are created with the participation of the developer, that's us of a property so that the design standards match specific needs of the property and project. Where there's a high value and importance to redevelopment. This is a site that needs redevelopment. There's absolutely no question about that. And my apologies to Tom Perkins, but this is an industrial site in downtown to bring housing and. And upscale restaurants and retailers to this site, I think would be a win-win. Comprehensive master plan. Here's some notes from, from that document, which was, I understand was approved in twenty twenty-one. Retain existing businesses while drawing a variety of new establishments to encourage residents to spend time and money in town and build Bridgewater's tax base. Again, exactly what we're hoping to do here. Co-locate housing, shopping and jobs in select areas to reduce single occupancy. Commutes and support healthy lifestyles. Again, exactly what we're trying to do, why we've added in the. The community garden, the walking trails and the little pocket parks. Encourage mixed-use development to attract family-oriented businesses and create. Additional housing, balanced land use and development with environmental stewardship and social equity concerns. And we're bringing, we're hoping to, to tie this property to Styles and Heart. We are tying this property directly to the town river. We're cleaning up a site that, that has some environmental and conservation challenges. We're removing buildings that themselves have some concerns. And we did, over the last three years, the next item, review the boundaries of use districts. We had to go through a rezoning in order to be able to, to bring this project forward. And I would note that. That we had, we had unanimous support for that rezoning. From the Town Council at the time that we, that we got the approval for that rezoning. Partner with developers to ensure that new housing development provides infrastructure amenities that benefit the community. Again, I'm not going to go over all those again, but chock full in our, in our project and what we've proposed. And explore opportunities to create retrofit to fulfill a variety of housing needs. And again, with our, our workforce housing, we hope to, to. Provide a, a variety of folks, the ability to live in and near all of these great amenities and downtown. Encourage mix of housing types to convenient walking and biking access. Consider. Again, Bob is working on, on new regulations, but we're hoping that you'll. You'll consider retrofitting these regulations so that we can bring you this project. And create a walkable downtown. And more from the two thousand twelve Housing Production Plan, again, multifamily and mixed-use is encouraged. And the two thousand thirteen Bicycle and Pedestrian Connectivity and Livability Study. Transit-oriented development, this would be especially true. Once Bob Rulie successfully gets the MBTA station moved closer to this site and. And gives us the ability to have mixed use within close proximity to that new train station. This is not new information. This is information I presented and presented in the past, so I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but, but you know, we're bringing in. A, a large amount of recurring revenue. We have a fiscal impact statement which shows that it is net positive recurring revenue. Of over a quarter million dollars a year. There, that doesn't include the one-time fees that a project like this would bring. And, and all of the other benefits that I've already gone over. And again, in, in the interest of time, I'm not going to repeat those today. And again, more from the comprehensive master plan, how we fit in, how, how this project really does promote those goals. And these are direct quotes from the comprehensive master plan. I just wanted to, to give a quick oh, run through and show you, and I, this should be in the package. It was submitted last week to you. These are the new elevations. Again, I think it has some improved colors. And we tweaked the plans, the, please keep in mind that elevations are not as, as pretty as renderings. But they are a little more detailed. And that's the, the building in back, which we've worked very hard to. Have that Ro House look to it. And this is the building on the south side in front, both the front view and the back, side view and back view. And the. New elevation of the building on the north side. And as you can see, that has the, the double drive-through lane and not single, and not the triple drive-through lane showing. And lastly, just some details about the improvements to the site plan. Everything's been buttoned up tighter by the, by the. Civil engineering team. We have a full set of site plan, plan, that plans that we submitted. Along with the, the additional information. There was one last week and then an updated one that we sent. I think it was yesterday. We wanted to add some additional features as a result of our discussions with, with your staff last week, which included some of these. Safety walking areas from the paths down through the, the, the parking areas, some more here and here. And crosswalks here, crosswalk here. Show this, this was just showing as green space before. We anticipate building it out with some. Some additional. Benches and, and so the, the public and the members of the direct community can enjoy it. And then based on Shane's comment last week, down here by the drive-through, we've pushed the. The drive-through lane a little bit further. That would be west, I guess, away from the street edge. And have a, a landscape buffer. That we will provide for those cars there. And we wanted to show the, the cars where they would queue and that there's sufficient queuing room down there. And that's really what I've got for a presentation tonight. We do have, as I said, John Cusick from, from Bowler Engineering. He can answer any questions you have with respect to the details on the site. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Our hope is that we can move forward tonight with. Positive feedback from you folks. Do a fully engineered. Set of calculations with respect to the stormwater for your engineering department for the next meeting. And perhaps move towards discussion of an approval. So with that, let me know if you want me to stop sharing and I'm happy to take any questions or, or go in any direction you folks desire.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Messer. Any board or staff questions or comments at this time?
Do, do you want me to stop sharing or are you?
You might as well keep it up just in case anyone has any questions about what you presented.
I guess I can back up. I think Shane took it down.
We, we could do it as needed to.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll go first if you don't mind, Mr. Karen.
Of course.
All right. First of all, I've been commenting on the last meeting. I believe I, I made a comment that. I was in favor of the project. The building in the back was my issue, that it was too large, that it would be nicer to have. Two smaller buildings, more of a town center. Well, after the meeting, I thought about it and I decided to. Poll people that have strong opinions and. At the end of the poll, I came out in the negative in the, as a minority, including from my wife. So I just want to say that I am now. Going along with the building in the back. I don't want to be in the way of that, although I do think that. Would be ideally that it would be smaller, but. I'm not going to say anything anymore. So that is settled, at least in my mind. Just some quick, not in any order, order of importance. How many entrances are there on Broad Street? Is there three or one or what? What is, what's the count?
Two, three. There's, there's actually two, two entrances. There's three driveways. One of the, the southmost driveway is a, an exit only. On that drive-through.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Steve. Could you pull it, bring the plan back up?
Oh, sure.
You don't have to. I just, just tell me it's enough. I don't, I grab the C people. So you, you, so you're saying there are three. And one is a, two are exits or just what?
Two, two are in and out and, and one of them is an out only from the site.
Okay, and what is the plan for, for instance, left turns out of there? Are you going to, I guess what I'm asking, are you, are these cars going to be able to? Go out into traffic and go the other way? In other words, make a left turn into traffic or are we, are we talking about right turn only?
We, you know, no, there, there wasn't a plan for, for any restrictions on the turns. And there wasn't a, an issue raised through our traffic impact analysis with respect to that?
I only bring it up because when the. Broad Street project was brought before us two years ago, that did come up as, as an issue that I believe one of the. Entrance exits was a right turn only, or in theory anyway, whether people would actually do it. There are, I, I know right on Broad Street right now, there is a, a right turn only on one of the entrances. I just something to consider. The, obviously the crossing, the, the crossing of Broad Street in terms of walkability is, is obviously important. We have to work on that. Bike racks, you're putting bike racks in and, and all the buildings?
Yes, yep. And a position, there'll be a bike room as well inside.
How about EV parking?
Yes, there'll be a number of EV park, EV charging stations or.
Buildings.
Yeah, it'll actually be wired and set up and ready for that. For the commercial buildings, we'll probably have them installed, but for the residential building, we'll have it. Ready to go and as soon as there's anybody who needed. ready to go. And as soon as there's anybody who needed to use it, we'd be installing it.
Why not install it? I mean, I mean, I would think that residents would want the selling point to be able to, since EVs are becoming more and more popular.
Definitely, definitely something worth considering. It's not a it's not a we we know that they're going to be there eventually. It's just a matter of what the appropriate timing is of that. And and maybe that it is advisable to to install them right from the get-go.
I would think so. He said, I believe he said that the you have extra parking.
Yes.
Is the ratio three spots for every two units?
John. Let's take take I I want to
I I think that's normally what we've been doing in 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 the central business. I guess.
It's one and a half. It really comes down to one and a third spaces per unit, I believe, by your bylaw.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what you had.
Yeah, but the the thing about our, just just to be clear about it, our our parking analysis is based on a an assumption of what the exact retail and commercial uses will be. And that could change, but we've we've been very conservative in that in those assumptions, so that will even no matter what, we're going to have excess parking. So we have three hundred and eighty-one spots onsite, and our calculation right now is that it requires three hundred and forty-two. So
Considering shared parking with commercial? Or no?
Well, the the site will lens itself so that so that some of the spots will be shared between it. There won't be a restriction for the commercial not using the residential areas or the residential areas, not using the commercial areas. So essentially all of the spots, except for the canoe launch area, all the spots are shared by all the uses. But naturally, people who are living in the building and the rear building are going to be parking close to that or in the rear of that. And people who are using the commercial spaces probably aren't going to be driving around to the back and using that that those spaces. But there won't be restrictions with respect to who uses what spaces. If that answers.
I guess my general comment is that i- if you have excess parking, why not just put more green area in? In other words.
Well, we can do that. If if the board prefers that, we however, our experience with parking is that even though people talk about the fact that there that there's less car use and it's a transit-oriented development. Everybody comes in with two cars and they want parking, number one. And number two, we didn't when we wanted we don't want to become a parking burden on this down this part of the downtown area. We don't want to make things worse. So we can eliminate some parking and make it green area, or we can leave them. We think it's probably from a planning perspective, better to leave the extra parking, but we'd leave that to the board's discretion with respect to that.
All right, I I have mixed feelings about that. I mean, on one hand, I understand your point about parking and that people need parking, and especially we're not we're not Boston. At the same time, I think there is there is a push to cut back on parking in a lot of these developments. So we're talking about the commercial in the on the first floor and front buildings and no commercial in the back, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamian, and thank thank your wife for us, please.
Yeah, she helped you.
And thank you, Ray. Any other board comments or questions?
I'll go next. One of the things I think I I kind of agree with 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 Ray, especially in the back portion, where you have some long stretches of parking, that middle section one, you know. I know in the plan that I don't see with the plan that you presented, you created a type of crosswalk going across. But I think maybe in that middle row of parking, you might want to create just an island and lose two parking spaces and put some couple of trees in there. And then when it comes to like your your possible potential for your EV chargers, I I mean, you might your chargers will probably might take up like a parking space, so you can put a car on either side of it. I don't know if that's what your plan is for or where those chargers would actually go.
We can we can certainly show where those chargers would go. I'm not the guy to ask, but we can show where where they would go.
You know, I again, I commend you on the design. I I think it looks really great. I appreciate that you you lowered it to it's not as high. And then one other comment is on the crosswalks. I I I think they are important, but I'd like to see something other than just a painted line on the ground. I I really like to see those lights flash that somebody wants to cross that they push it and they flash, you know. They got them over into college. It's a it's a solar-powered flashing light. And I'm seeing I'm seeing a lot of towns putting them in at every crosswalk. And I I'd really like to see that across Broad Street.
We 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 actually agree. We we put in a couple of those in our project in in Walpole. And we can we can specify exactly what those are on any as a condition on on any list of conditions for the approval.
I agree. And then my only other concern, and you know, I know we talk about development of what's going across the street. And let's, you know, let's face it, we don't know when it's going to happen, if it's going to happen, or what it's going to look like. So to to raise point, and I asked you to go back to your traffic study. That one exit only. It may be privy to be a right turn only and not left pulling out in front of the post office. Where people are pulling trying back out of the post office and or when Dunkin' Donuts gets backed up in the mornings, it's just a it can be a real nightmare.
But I guess I guess what what I'd like to do is push that question to our traffic engineer and see what what his opinion is on that. And then we can we can.
Absolutely. I mean, I I understand why we did it up, why we asked it to be a requirement closer to the center of town. But you know, it just, you know, it's a little bit of a, I think it's a little bit of a safety concern. But I'm not a traffic engineer or consultant, so but I'd like for him to closely look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's all I have for right now.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add to what Steve just said?
Of course, Mr. Jimmy.
Yeah, I I agree with Stephen, and I think the the crosswalk signs that we have in Central, at the Central Square right now are almost worthless because they don't flash. And you have to have flashing signs. And maybe even, I think even at Broad Street before, we had talked about warning traffic before the crosswalk that there's a crosswalk ahead. In other words, a sign further up on Broad Street. Letting people know that there's a there's a crosswalk. I think that I think that's something that's got to be studied carefully, because I I have a feeling we're going to have whether Roach Brothers Plaza is redone or not, they're going to have people crossing that street. So we have to be very careful. Thank you.
Okay, anything from Miss Pagon, Miss Rojas?
I agree with both. You know, mentioned that I mentioned at the last meeting that I was for the plan. But I also resonate with with what the team is saying today with regards to the crosswalks. Making it pedestrian-friendly, that's one of the points that not sure how to say, but that I that I loved about Bridgewater. You know, I understand that it's a university community, but the fact that it was so pedestrian-conscious and you know, that my kids could walk through the streets and and we were all safe. You know, it was cognizant of all community members. I feel that when I walk the streets and I would love for that to also be implemented into this new construction project. If you could do anything to to add that, to provide that with this project, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And and we feel the same way. We want our our new residents to be safe.
Okay, thank you. Miss Pagon, anything from you?
I I pretty much echo what my colleagues say. I actually like the revisions that have been done so far to this project. It's you know, it's a great proposal that's come before the board. Agree, there certainly needs to be a little bit more traffic calming in the way of pedestrians. Obviously, the crosswalks with the lighted signs would be helpful. I think that that does help taking into mind what we're trying to achieve, at least for the long-term vision reality concept of trying to make the community more of a walkable community. I do like the fact that there's more of a Parkland approach to the actual onsite amenities, like the small parkland, a little boat landing. That is something that I was really hoping for, and I've seen that be addressed. And now I just I just want to see what the rest of the colleagues want to see, which is more of a a traffic calming type of situation for the pedestrians. And I think we're 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 pretty good on on that at that point.
Great, thank you.
Okay, there's no further board commentary. We'll see if town staff has anything, and if not, we'll turn it over to the public comment. Anything from you, Mr. O'Brien and Mr. Rui?
Yeah, just it just in terms of putting a name to a term, they're called rapid rectangular flashing beacons. So RRFB is what they're called. So yeah, we would agree and recommend those as well. And I think there was a comment about, I'm trying to remember. I think, yeah, we provided a staff memo over to the applicant. So but yeah, if any board members have any questions, we did receive updated site plans based on the presentation today. That I'll have re-forward over to the board after we kind of absorbed some new information. But of course, we'll have some additional comments when we're, once we re-review the updated plans based on some recommendations that came from our meeting last week. Updated plans as well as any new updated plans as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So we'll open up to public commentary, and I believe they'd like to speak theirs. They have a raise their hand option somewhere around here.
Yes, and additionally too, we did receive some email correspondence that I did forward over to the board. So that information is on our public comment page, and I did forward it over to the board, but I will unmute Ms. Janet's iPad and will allow her to speak.
Shane, could you just send that whatever emails you got to me as well when you have a chance, please?
Sure, they are actually, they are available if you go onto our online public page, and I can provide that information. But you're good to go, Janet. Please just also state your name and your address as well.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I have to admit, I'm guilty of not following this project that much. So I had a question. It's probably been answered, but I was just curious where the Midas and the Kentucky Fried Chicken Taco Bell buildings, are they being torn down? Are they disappearing? I was just curious and concerned for those businesses. And on the crosswalks, I agree that, you know, they do need to they, you know, have those flashing signs. But at the common, they had the flashing signs that were on continuously, which kind of blind as a driver, I found them blinding, but they're not on now. But if they're on, it should be that they only go on when somebody's trying to cross the street. Don't have them continuously because they can be distracting. And you tend to ignore something if you see it flashing all the time. So I'm hoping that's what you mean by if you have them flashing, that it's when somebody wants to cross, not on, you know, twenty-four hours a day. That would be my comment, because as a driver, I found the ones at the common, when they were on continuously, even though no one was crossing, it was distracting and blinding. But I was just curious about what's happening to the businesses that are on that property now. And I did see the pictures, you know, of the buildings that he presented tonight, and and they do look pretty good, I have to admit. So those are my questions. And it would be nice if I had an answer, at least on the businesses. Thank you.
I I can answer it if you like, Mr. Chair.
Of course, that'd be fine. Thank you.
None of those buildings will be torn down. Taco Bell, KFC, and Midas will remain.
As well as the the building formerly known as Napa.
Yes. All right, we also have an additional hand raised. We have Mark laptop.
Hi, I'm Mark Peterson, forty-three Church Street. I just want to say for the for the walkways and for the green spaces, I'm just hoping that the the applicant component has invasive species management plan, because down that area, there's a lot of Japanese knotweed and oriental bittersweet and all time types of plants that will take over any walkways and un-unmanaged areas. So just hoping that the that they can consider an invasive species management plan for that area. And I'm sure the Conservation Commission might have some other issues for invasive species, but this this is for the non-wetland areas. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me check if anyone else has their virtual. We also have a Donna Jewell who would like to speak. If you are around Donna.
Hi, my name is Donna Jewell, fifty Keith Place, Bridgewater. I had submitted a letter to the planning board, but I just submitted it today, so I don't know if all the members had a chance to receive it and review it. One of the, I think the project is a welcome addition to the community. But one concern I have is the reduction in the retail and commercial space, reducing from thirty percent to what I believe I heard at the last meeting that I attended was twelve to thirteen percent. That's a big concern of mine. I respectfully urge the board not to approve that dramatic of a reduction. It does not seem to support the Town of Bridgewater's master plan. The plan that I have seen and many times outlines adding businesses to the town that would attract people to Bridgewater. I understand that part of the proposed retail commercial space here in lots of property is also a drive-through location that may be utilized by a bank. And a bank will not be drawing people to town or give them reason to want to have some walkability and go to a nice restaurant or receive some services. Going down to the twelve to thirteen percent just seems like it's not going to help us accomplish that long range goal and the long-term master plan. The property here is located on a very high-traffic road, and it's ideal for retail and commercial business. If we're really committed to planning according to the master plan, we can't allow that kind of reduction. Why have the master plan if we're going to allow exceptions to it to this extent? I realize that there's a dream of converting the campus plaza to a shopping village, but there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. It would be nice if it did, but it's probably years down the road. The Perkins Foundry property is vital to the success of our retail and commercial space. I feel that that expansion is more important than some of the other things that the developer is kindly and respectfully willing to offer to us. I have heard the argument that retail and commercial space is not what it used to be. And that it's we can't fill that space, we as a developer or we as a community. I have to respectfully disagree with that. Retail has changed. It's not disappeared. It definitely has not disappeared. As an owner of commercial property in three different towns, I say that from my own experience. There are aspects of retail that are thriving. I also believe that the developer, and I could be wrong, because I have not had time to look at every document that's been submitted, has not demonstrated any viable reason for the request to reduce that space other than their profitability. If there were other reasons, I would hope that someone could please educate all of us as to what those reasons are, those extenuating circumstances. I also couldn't find any requested waiver from the commercial space requirement if one has submitted outlining any extenuating circumstances. Could you point me in that direction citing why they need this waiver? We have zoning laws and a master plan in place for a reason, and I'm just respectfully asking you to do everything in your power to ensure that we abide by these plans and laws. I think we're going in the right direction. I've attended the community development meetings that Mr. Rui has put on. I thought they were fantastic, but we can't get off that track. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Michael, I do not see anyone in the chat. Oh, we have a hand, we have two hands raised. We have, uh, Merrily Kenny Hunt.
Hi, thanks. I just briefly, I, I, um, had to step away for a minute, so I hope nobody else has said this, and I'll say it very quickly. When you were talking about the crosslights and
I'm sorry, Merrily, can you just, can you just state your name and address?
Oh, sure. Merrily Kenny Hunt, 80 Austin Street.
Thank you, apologize.
Thanks, no problem. Thanks. Um, when you were talking about the, the crossing, crossing lights uh, and asking them for them to be flashing, I agree with that. I also very much would ask you to make them uh, completely accessible and have them be talking. I'm very pleased when I go to a town where it, it flashes, it shows you the time to cross, and it also says walk. Because there are people who are there and are blind and still need to cross the streets. So, and sometimes even for children, um, I think those things are helpful. So just for the full, uh, capacity for the crossing lights, I'd ask for them to be completely accessible. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you. All right, we have a Brian Quinlan with his hand raised. Brian, you're good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, um, what's the purpose of the two drive-throughs on this proposal? Is that for businesses?
Are you, is it necessary to a commercial? Business? Oh, yeah, Brian Quinlan, yeah, you're right. Name and address, please.
14 Corrin Terrace.
Uh, they would be accessory to two commercial uses.
All right, and most of those, you know, most banks and brick and mortars are closing. They're not, you know, around anymore, so is there really a need for that? Um, also the parking spots, you said you have 381 spots. How many of those are, uh, proposed for those businesses? Any idea?
Well, I think earlier it was mentioned that all spaces would be shared amongst each of the residents and commercial, but they do meet their commercial count that's required for their commercial, um, commercial space based on the square footage.
So there's how many units being built? In this development?
Believe it's 140 if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
It's, it's 150, 150, uh, residential units, Shane.
Uh, 150.
All one bedrooms, two bedrooms?
One and two bedrooms.
There is also additionally, if I could forward the information, put in the chat, uh, the information about the application, the site plans that are readily available on the town's website.
The only reason I bring up parking, I know, uh, Mr. Rui was, I spoke with him in the past, uh, regarding this. There's really not much, uh, parking downtown. In my opinion, a lot of it is shared parking. Um, you know, and if you want a, a, a sustainable, uh, restaurant to be in town, you need parking or some sort of business, they need parking. And shared parking doesn't typically help, you know? I work for a utility company. I drive around everywhere. Like, uh, a person said, there's a lot of the brick and mortar stores are closing. Um, restaurants aren't really thriving right now. A lot of them are closing. So, you know, they need parking in order to sustain. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. Um, yeah, I don't see any more virtual hands raised, nor do I see anyone else in the chat.
Okay, uh, so I guess we, oh, we have another hand raised.
Another hand raised. All right, Caitlin Barry Brown, if you could just state your name and your address.
Caitlin Barry Brown, 201 Main Street, Bridgewater. Um, I just wanted to clarify if the residential units in this proposal are apartments or condominiums?
Apartments.
Okay, and I know you did discuss at the beginning of the conversation this evening. Um, you know, the, who exactly the apartments were going to be aimed toward, but really, there's no, um, are there any protections in terms of, um, having these geared towards family, um, middle-class families, that sort of thing? I just have concerns that this is just going to become an extension for additional apartments for the university. Um, due to the proximity to the university, due to the fact that it's going to, as you've said, have a lot of, um, great leisure space and things of that nature. So it just seems like more and more of the residential properties that we're seeing in the immediate vicinity of the university are kind of being dominated by, um, you know, the college. Uh, so I just didn't know if there's any protections so that these apartments will be reserved for actual, you know, taxpaying residents that are going to be in the area.
I mean, there's, as we, as we said, there's going to be 10% affordable. Um, but beyond that, w- we doubt that it'll be popular student housing um, based on the market rates that will be available. But we, we don't and probably couldn't legally prevent students from renting just based on their status as a student. I know that that was an issue on, uh, some work that I did in another municipality and um, it's, it's really a, an issue that, that you can't really say no students allowed.
Yeah, and just, just from a, a staff perspective, uh, we wouldn't recommend conditions that would violate any Fair Housing Act or recommend anything that would violate the Fair Housing Act, um, to this board for the town.
Okay, and then, uh, I had two other questions or I guess comments. Um, one was, I, I'm sure that some other folks upon reviewing this definitely, um, have expressed concerns about um, the amount of traffic that's going to be coming out on Broad Street. As somebody who lives in the immediate vicinity, the traffic on Broad Street is already a huge concern that we don't really seem to have a, a clear solution to. Um, and knowing that these apartments are going to basically be adding into that flow. I mean, during the afternoons already, the traffic from the traffic lights at Main Street where it comes right into the center, traffic backs down all the way down to Bridgewater Copy and that whole area, which these, um, these apartments essentially going to be dumping right out into that same vicinity. So, um, really just more commentary than anything else in terms of not asking a question for clarification, but I, I have some serious concerns about that. Um, and then finally, I just also have some concerns about, um, whether or not the, um, historic committee has been involved in any of the conversations for these plans. Um, you know, I just knowing how long this foundry has been there, how long it was in, in the Perkins family, um, ownership, and how much the Perkins family has contributed to the town for literal generations. I just have some concerns that, you know, were, I, I'm sure it was a big decision to put this on the market in the first place. Um, but, you know, I, I just, I, I hate to see, you know, buildings that have been so steeped in our town's history literally just demolished and turned into apartments, like literally just turned into apartments. And having additional folks coming in and utilizing resources that are already, um, you know, under a pretty significant strain for the town in terms of water, in terms of our public service agents. Um, just, just some additional concerns that I've had.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, and we have, uh, Julie's hand raised. Um, if Julie, if you could state your name and your address. Or Julie, would you like to speak? All right, uh, Julie's hands, hand went down. Um, we also have Brian Quinlan's hand re-raised. Brian, you could be you're allowed to speak, Brian.
I'm curious regarding the why all apartments and not condos. Um, I know I've dealt with, um, different communities as well with, um, in Grand Tree Turtle Crossing. They've had like, uh, lotteries for people to, you know, lower income, middle income people to get into condos within, um, developments. And, you know, they could only, if it was a $200,000 unit, you could only sell it for 20% or whatever more when you were to get out of it. Apartments to me do not really help people other than the landlords. Whereas a condo, people can build equity and wind up going into possibly moving on into something else. Um, is that ever a consideration as far as some sort of lottery or condos for some, for lottery?
So Brian, can I answer that, please?
Of course.
So Brian, you're referring to a 40B project, which, uh, have a requirement for a percentage of affordability, uh, which does require a lottery. Uh, Bridgewater is above the 10% requirement that the state has imposed for allowing 40Bs. Uh, so this is purely a property rights decision by the landowner as to what direction they want to go. Um, uh, we appreciate the fact that in exchange for the reduction in the commercial space, and we have at previous meetings talked about the difficulty in financing and building commercial space, given the current economic conditions, that the commitment that the one, the property owner is giving to have those 10% of the units be deed restricted in perpetuity is, is, is a win. So there is some affordability into this project.
All right, thank you, Bob. Um, and we have Carlton's hand raised.
Hi, Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street, Energy Committee Chair of Bridgewater. I apologize in advance if you've already talked about this, but I haven't really seen anything on the energy conservation plans for the buildings. Uh, we do have a, an apartment building here in town that is a passive house. Uh, one of the highest-rated energy conservation buildings in the state of Massachusetts. And I just would like a little bit of input on what the plans are for making this uh, complex if it's approved, uh, as energy efficient as possible. I'll take, thank you.
Well, uh, uh, I don't know if you want me to answer that, but we but I'm happy to just chime in. We, we, obviously there's the stretch code that we have to, uh, which is becoming more and more strict that we have to, uh, adhere to, but this project also, the next step, if we get approval from the town, is that we will be going through the process with the mass, uh, with MIPA, Mass Environmental Policy Act Review. Um, and, uh, through that process, we will no doubt be, um, they'll be, uh, insisting on some, um, provisions beyond the stretch code as well.
All right, and I don't see any more virtual hands raised, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so to the best of my understanding, uh, uh, Mr. Metzer was also here looking for feedback. I believe he's gotten quite a bit of it. Um, how would you like to, uh, how would you like to proceed, Mr. Metzer? Uh, continue to adjourn time certain month or so or?
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate. We could have, um, uh, John, um, Cusick from, from Bowler can weigh in here, uh, to, to do the, the full engineering of the site, get that to your engineering department for review, and then get, uh, get that review back. Um, sort of a timeframe for that. I, uh, you know, we couldn't do it probably, I don't know when your next meeting is, but probably leapfrog to somewhere about a month out. Does that make sense, John, from your perspective?
Yeah, I, I think we should be able to have something about a month, a month or so from now.
Uh, just, just in terms of, I guess, for the benefit of the staff and the board, would, John, would you be willing to meet with staff um, sometime within the next month, just to kind of go over some of the plans, uh, for some comments as well?
Of course.
Sure.
Um, and then maybe, maybe, uh, maybe I'm asking too much, but maybe a draft set of conditions could be, uh, could be put together during that time period as well, same time, so that can, um, move towards specifics at the next meeting.
Okay.
Do you feel that's an appropriate timetable for your office as well, Shane? What though?
Yeah, December 6th would be that meeting. I know we're talking about December already, but we're in November. So, yeah, I think, uh, December 6th would be in a, a appropriate time. Um, I would just leave it up to the board if we want to maintain having the public hearing open, or we want to, um, close the public hearing for any deliberation.
I, I personally, I think the public hearing should absolutely remain open. I mean, we haven't even seen an actual set of, you know, drafted, um.
Sure.
Just my personal opinion, though.
Okay. But, um, yeah, December 6th would be one month out, uh, one month and five days, so that should give us some time.
If I may, uh, just, uh, is, is, is a month enough time? I mean, this is a fairly big project. It's got to be reviewed. Are we, are we better talking about the second meeting in December to the first? I'd like to push it, Mr. Jimmian, if we can. Uh, if it turns out that it's not enough time, we can certainly keep, or, I mean, the board's going to be in the loop. I mean, the, the staff is going to be in the loop anyway as to our progress. Um, we've, we've been, um, as you know, we've been dealing with this project for a long time. I'd like to just keep the pressure on a little bit, um, both on our end and on your end as well. So I, I would request the 6th of December for that purpose.
I just, uh, Donald, if I could just add, I, I, I think if we're moving forward at this point, we've talked in the past about establishing a fund for a third-party review, peer review. Um, I think that if the board could take, you know, allow that to happen, um, this will keep the train on the tracks.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm not sure, do we, uh, what will we have to do to facilitate that? I'm much not sure on our
It would be, uh, just, just as a point of reference, it would be the board essentially establishing a, a 53G account. Um, typically from my past history is not to exceed $10,000. Um, and so we wouldn't have to go out for an RFP. So what I would, um, probably recommend is a 53G account. Um, I think in the case of, uh, this project specific maybe to the, the kind of the stormwater as to kind of alleviate some of the stress of, uh, town engineering staff, doesn't prevent town engineering from uh, reviewing the plans, but I think, uh, from a project of this caliber, I think, um, looking at it from a stormwater perspective, um, I think would be beneficial. So it'd be, it would be simply a motion just to establish a 53G account. Um, I guess with the, the language of not to exceed 10,000.
And, and, uh, we have no objection to that. We, we think that's appropriate for peer review.
Just the question, if I may, is, is 10,000 enough for this? I'm not
Uh, I, I would say that the established, I guess that number is really based on the ability for us to go out and kind of select a consultant. Um, I would, I would say that the scope, I would say that we would probably have a scope of work that would be less than $10,000 and then solely kind of pick away at what would be necessary in terms of that review. Um, so I, 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 I wouldn't see it exceed $10,000. Uh, I think that the scope of this 53G account based on just a stormwater review, um, shouldn't exceed $10,000.
Mr. Jim, to your point, if there was a need to expand the scope beyond stormwater and drainage, we could proceed with another $10,000. The, 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 the goal is to try to avoid having to put this out for a public solicitation when we don't have a defined scope.
I understand. Um, what sort of motion do you need to do this?
Uh, I would say a motion to establish a 53G account as not to, um, exceed $10,000 would be an appropriate motion.
With the intent that this account will be used to evaluate stormwater for this project, correct?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion if, uh, you allow me to.
Of course. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All righty, MJ.
Hi.
Astrid?
Yes.
Steve?
Yep.
Ray?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
All right. And we're looking to continue to December 6th?
I'll make that motion to continue this hearing until December 6th at 6:30.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Miss Pagon?
Hi.
And I'm a yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody. And because I won't see you before then, everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
All right, let me see if Pat's back.
I'm back.
You're back. Welcome back, Pat.
All right. So continuing on, I'll open up the continued public hearing for zero corporate. Can you hear me okay, Shane?
You're all good.
Yes.
For zero corporate driver proposed hotel for Clermont Bridgewater Hotel to LLC Site Planner Review Approval Pursuant to Section 10.6, Section 6.0, Section 9.4, and Appendix B Table Dimensionary Requirements. So. Yep.
Before you begin, I will need to recuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest. I will listen in on, but I will not participate.
Thank you, Ms. Pagon.
Also, Pat, we can't see you.
Can't see me. Wait a minute. Oh, you know what?
There you go.
Yeah, I, you know what I did? I turned the camera off. I'm sorry. All right. So before I, before I turn it over to the applicant for the continued presentation, you know, I just, I'd just like to get a few things out there and, and maybe some, you know, other board members can also comment on this. But we've, we've received a tremendous amount of correspondence, a tremendous amount of information from the applicant, a tremendous amount of correspondence from the, the abuddhas. And I think as board members, we all, you know, really appreciate that from both sides and really consider all of it. I mean, I know a number of us have been reading letters in 1988 special permits over and over again. So with that being said, I know there have been a number of requests to determine whether or not this special permit is still valid. And in talking to town staff and reviewing it, I think as a board, we have to move on from that, except that this is still valid from, from 1988. And it's our job to weigh this project based on the site standards and the special permit before us. And to determine whether or not this is a major deviation or a minor deviation from the special permit. Once we determine that and we go into site plan review, which we're in now, page 12 of the decision. Excuse me. Page 12 of the decision states that if the board finds there is no substantial deviations, then the board shall approve the plan as submitted or approve the plan with conditions consistent with the master plan relative to the layout of the layout and location of buildings as well, as well as the layout, location, design of landscaping, lighting, packing areas, loading zones, access drives, outside storage areas, drainage, utility structures, and other items. So, I mean, I think that's what, that's what we have to do. We have, we have large project standards that we adopted through the zoning rewrite and, and, in January. And we have this master plan and this special permit that we have to weigh the project against. So in my opinion, the withdrawal of the special permit that Clermont submitted, in addition to the special permit was, was the right decision. However, you know, we can't say that this special permit exists and then deviate from it or not pay attention to the, the conditions therein. You know, this special permit created the plan development and the plan development district and it provides for development of commercial and industrial uses. It also has many conditions in here that we may not have always gotten right in the past, that minimize impacts to the natural environment, the lake and the residents around it. It outlines a number of conditions in the decision to protect these residential districts and the lake. So I went over page 12 of the decision and how we have to approve the special permit or approve it with conditions. And there are a number of conditions in there that some of the residents have pointed out and, and I, I agree with them on. I know, I know several years ago, we approved the ability for parking to be within, in the 200 foot zone. I believe up to 50 feet. But the special permit wasn't modified. And when I look at that hotel site at the Marriott, there were reasons we allowed for parking in the front. It was between an existing building and wetlands. And, you know, parking was a, was a challenge on that site. But the special permit criteria was never modified and the special permit criteria still requires a 200 foot buffer strip, you know, between Route 104 and the, in the, in the constructed buildings. And it also lists a number of, of other conditions in that decision, starting on, on page 12. So I also look at the, the standards for large projects. And the standards for large projects lay out a number of things in regards to parking. You know, first of all, beca- because of these new standards we adopted in January, I think the new, the new codification went into effect, we can prohibit parking in the front yard setback. We can ask for parking to be on the right or the rear of the buildings. Should the site be able to accommodate it? And this site has plenty of room between the hotel and the Lake Shore Center roadway. We also have the ability to reduce parking. And I think the plan development district was designed in such a way, we had lots, you had connectivity, you had one common access point and you had walkable, walkable areas. So as one member, I would like to see that 200 foot buffer maintained. If we're relying on this special permit and the conditions therein, I think that the, the proponent needs to demonstrate how they're meeting those, those conditions in the decision. And as a board, I hope we consider asking them to move the parking to the rear and the side, provide that natural buffer in the front. And also consider to help them out and, and to make this work, a reduction in parking for them if, if they determine that would, would work for them. So my point is, is that we, we received a lot of correspondence. I, I think we have to get over the fact whether this is valid or not. I think the special permit is valid. I think it's been, I think that's been validated by town staff, by our town attorney. I do believe that we need to follow the, the, the large project criteria. I do believe we should work with the applicant on potentially reducing parking or looking for parking alternatives. But I also do believe that if this is the special permit we're working on, we can't just say, hey, there are certain things in here that we, we are going to stick to and then certain things we're going to ignore. And I think having that 200 foot buffer that is required as part of this plan development in this special permit would go a long way to mitigating the impacts to the lake, to the neighborhood and, and to the overall area. And there's sufficient area to move that parking to the side and keep it behind that 200 foot line. So, you know, I'll, I'll turn it over to other board members to comment before we, before we continue this evening. But I think that there's been so much talk about the special permit, whether or not it's valid, whether or not this is a major modification, a, a major deviation or not a major deviation. We, we just keep going back to that as, as, as soon as the, the last meeting, we're still talking about it. And I think that as a board, we withdrew the special permit request in addition to the special permit request. We have been relying on the 1988 special permit. If we're relying on that, we can't disregard the conditions in that. If the applicant has to meet those and show us and demonstrate how they're going to meet those standards, including the 200 foot setback. If they don't agree with those or they don't want to meet those, a feel they can't meet those, they have every right to come to the board and to ask for a modification of the special permit, which they have not done. And I would, you know, based on the comments that we've received from the public, based on the environmentally sensitive area that it's being built in, based, based on the impact of the nip across the street. You know, and, and we've had a number of people point, that point out, we just, we received a piece of correspondence recently with a bunch of questions in it that I went through. And it really made me dive into this some more and, and, and talk to, to staff today. So from my perspective, this is, this is what we need to focus on. I would like to see the, the conditions of the special permit met. And I would hope that the applicant would work with town staff to make that happen. So I don't know if there's any other comments before we want to get started from the board and then I can turn it over to, to the applicant.
I'll just start. So Driscoll, first of all, I want to compliment you on putting this project in some perspective because I, I do think that it's unfortunate that this board and others have, were not aware of the 1988 agreement. And that's caused some distress, I think, for all of us in terms of how to work, how to, how to look at this project. I think your analysis is correct that assuming that the fact that the town attorney has said the special print is in effect. The fact that it is in effect, then we should abide by what the special permit says. And your, your point about the 200 foot setback is, is correct. I would also add that if the special permit is in effect, it also requires that any changes to it that the applicant has to come before the board. And it seems that there are changes that are being proposed, restaurants and residential units, which are not allowed in the planned development district and all that, and even the layout. And that should, and the fact that it is a special permit, they should come back before this board to look at the layout. There are other issues, but I think that you bring up the main point that, that, that should be addressed. There are other things that I'm not sure we want to get into now. I know we were, we were, we asked for a a landscaping plan about the trees and I'm not sure whether we received anything like that. But anyway, I'll defer to others now. I have other points, but I'm just, I just want to compliment the chair on his analysis. Thank you.
And Mr. Jimmy, and I agree, and I think I've said this to Mr. Rully and Mr. O'Brien in the past, that overall, the whole plan there, if they're going to start to introduce or consider introducing other uses needs to be the, the, the whole, the whole, the whole master plan should be, you know, up, up, updated, so to speak. But I think we have one, we don't have any other projects before us. We don't know if there's other projects ever coming before us. We see things on plans, but nothing's been submitted to us. So I think, I think for this exercise, we have to focus on just this site and how it, how it complies and fits into the master plan and the special permit before us and our large site a large project, site standards. And I think there are some glaring deficiencies if you look at this project and that, in that in that decision. I, I, like I said, I do believe that if you read the, if you read the special permit, I, I do believe that it, it is valid. That, that's a fight that should happen in 1999 when we approved the first office building. If that's when that fight was going to occur. And I do believe the use is not a standard, is not a substantial deviation from, from, from the plan. I mean, this is a commercial office park and an industrial park. And it mentioned, I believe at one time it mentioned motel use. And, and if you look in the language of the, the document in the decision, it, it basically says, you know, here are the uses, but other uses may be contemplated that haven't been thought of or as, or as market conditions and things. And I'm paraphrasing, but as market conditions improve, change or, or improve. So I think that my issue isn't with the development, my issue isn't with the use. My issue is that we have this master plan with these protections that have been put into place for the surrounding area and the environment. And in the past, I don't think we've always been been, you know, in keeping with the, the original special permit, but that doesn't mean that we continue to, to not be in keeping with that original special permit. I think that, that there are a number of issues that have been brought up by, by the abuddhas. There have been a number of arguments made by the proponent. I think I think that what we have to do is decide which, which ones, which of those are relevant to the special permit before us and, and apply this site plan to the site standards into that special permit. And if you go through that special permit and it's painful to read because it's very small type and there's a lot of words, but it's, it's, it's clear that there should be a major screening in buffer area between this plan development and the surrounding area. So, Mr. Geller, I'm sorry. Did you say something?
No.
Oh, okay. Are there any other board comments that I can either open it up to staff or the applicant at this point? Okay. And I see Mr. Lovett, I see Mr. Lovett, would you like to take over this evening or somebody from your team?
Certainly. If there are no staff comments, I'm happy to, to begin.
You're all good.
Great. Well, thank you again, everyone, for your time this evening. Over the past two weeks, since the last hearing, we have been working through a number of items and issues that were raised by the, by the board and by the community in, in the last hearing. And would like the opportunity to appreciate, you know, chairman's sentiments and, but would like to also continue to update on some additional work that's been done during this timeframe. So one of the items that had, had really come up was with regard to a potential for porous pavement in the, in the parking lot. We do note that, you know, per the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, Volume 2, Chapter 2, Specifications for Poor, Poorous Pavement. The, it does state that porous pavement is not suitable for discharges near or to critical areas, especially in the Zone 2. With that said, we, and if I may share my screen, we did have some additional thoughts and looked into some design modifications that we would hope would benefit the project. And it actually did include a proposed reduction of some pervious, or some of the parking. Bear with me one moment as I look to share my screen. Apologies for the delay. All right. Sorry about that. So what we were going to propose was in, if you can see my cursor, that in this area, the parking along Route 104, there's 14 spaces here. If we were to reduce those or remove those spaces, I think it would help with the, the drainage, reducing the pervious area. And we can, you know, work to, we did have 132 parking spaces proposed, but would be happy to reduce that parking in that area. And hopefully, and to the chairman's point, I think also help with the buffer from the roadway. Additionally, comment was, some comments were made with regard to electric vehicle charging stations. And they're not shown on this because it's the landscape plan. However, However, in the landscape plan, I'm sorry, in the uh, the site plan, we had proposed four um charging stations along this um in this parking area. Obviously, we would relocate those uh in, but we will have the electric vehicle charging stations uh in, within the the hotel property, and we've committed to that. There have been some discussions with regard to solar. Uh, again, we've uh, from a structural standpoint, we have incorporated structural integrity uh of the uh solar for the structure on the roof. Uh, I know there was a request with regard to commitment to installation of those solar panels, and we, we are doing solar on other projects. We're interested in doing in this one. We just need to be cognizant of um how the the funding for those uh is being handled. So uh, it's absolutely a an amenity. We would like to include in the property. I just, it's gonna depend somewhat on timing. We did submit a response with regard to uh the stream that's called out on the plan. Uh, I believe that that's been circulated, and I think it was also uh touched on in the uh DPW Engineering Department letter from yesterday. Uh, there was a question I'd like to clarify or uh with regard to water and the water um the spreadsheets that were at the last hearing. So if I may, the, there was a question with regard to Viva one and Viva two um in the Marriott. So what we were able to do is Paul, if you'll see, actually, the easiest way to look at this is if you look at the bill numbers and codes, these were somewhat older invoices, uh, but they'll show the cubic usage in cubic foot bill number and timing. What we did was we updated our spreadsheets and calculation to show that those uh invoices and bills for uh for Viva one and Viva two, uh, we're pulling those back and updating them. Again, the one six and the ten six invoices were the ones that were on the previous spreadsheet. So you'll see that those numbers tie the hundred and eighty-eight thousand and the hundred and ninety-four thousand uh hundred and eighty-eight and a hundred and ninety-four. So the the comment was made that are these two separate projects, is it one project, two meters? It it, those were the one project uh two meters, one for each building. Um, but again, that ties back for me, jumping ahead to, oops. Um, to our overall spreadsheet, which shows again the toilet trailing twelve-month usage for all of the properties on Lake Shore um as part of Lake Shore Center. Um, so again, these are the most current numbers with current bills, uh, and these have been submitted for the town, but hopefully that um that clarifies the question with regard to the water. Similarly, with regard to the grease trap, uh, we've submitted uh a response with regard to the grease trap and the size of the grease trap uh and the functionality. Again, understanding that that's really more of a health department um plumbing concern, but we did want to uh be responsive to the the questions and comments from the town. With regard, there was uh Chairman Driscoll, I'd ask specifically about section um six point three and how we were addressing uh clearing as well as um so, a- as we look at the clearing and the, on the property, uh, the limits of the clearing are shown on the latest revised site plan, and it's, it is necessary in order to construct a properly functioning surface water drainage system. Uh, original grades and vegetation have been preserved so far as practical while attaining compliance with Massachusetts DEP Stormwater Management Practices one through ten uh as applicable, including BMP six entitled Critical Areas. This is confirmed by the Drainage Evaluation Report prepared by Silva Engineering Associates dated October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, which includes the MMAS DEP Checklist for Stormwater uh Reports. Uh, we have complied with the site development standards set forth with the Town of Bridgewater zoning ordinance, section six point three, specifically subsection C one land disturbance, C three preservation of existing vegetation, and C seven limited clearing. Uh, considerable effort has been made by Clermont to preserve uh the mature trees, and I'll I'll show that, uh, that was the second part of this. I'll be able to show you those trees momentarily. That effort um as well as the contribution, which has been discussed uh for maintenance of trees throughout the town of Bridgewater is consistent with the goals of section six point three. Uh, engineering for phase one of the development for lot seven is in accordance with the accepted engineering practices and DEP requirements. Uh, it's not contrary to reasonable site development standards. So with that said, um, we did, uh, based on the request is based on the request of having a landscape architect come out and locate the trees, uh, we did uh locate the trees, and this was submitted in the the package to the town, but we were able to identify um some of the mature trees in the buffer zone, or not, I shouldn't say buffer zone, but in the uh, the area that would not be graded uh for the proposed project. So I do have some visuals. Again, these are um perspectives that we had done, which show the the area. So this would be the view from Lake Shore Center and then the view um from one oh four. Uh, and you will see, as we discussed, I believe, the last time, uh, we do need to create this out in order to be able to drain the property um and drain off of and control the water. I think, I believe that those are the high points um that kept in questions that came out of the last hearing. Um, so happy to uh take any other questions, comments, and
Driscoll, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Rully, go ahead.
I mean, I I think, Mr. Lovett, that, knowing fairness to you, um, you know, this is coming at you tonight with respect to, you know, the position that the chair has articulated, that the special permit from eighty-eight is valid and that, you know, we're, as such, the two-hundred-foot buffer needs to be respected. So everything you just talked about is not taking that into consideration. In fact, you know, the two-hundred-foot buffer takes it to the front door of the building where there's actually, in addition to the parking encroaching into the buffer, there are improvements off of the building, canopies or awnings or whatever that are encroaching into the buffer. So um, you know, you live by the sword, you die by the sword. So, you know, we're acknowledging that the eighty-eight special permit is there. Um, I think that it's been determined that if someone thought there was a substantial deviation from what was approved in eighty-eight, that time has passed, but the issue now is that the, and I'm not speaking for the board, but I heard what the chair said, the two-hundred-foot buffer is in play.
Well, and I, and just to follow up on Mr. Rully, we did in two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, whether we made a good decision or a bad decision, through the town council, we changed zoning up in the Plan Development District to allow parking within within fifty feet. It doesn't mean we have to allow parking within fifty feet. It means we can, and the special permit still says two hundred. In addition, just this January or December, whenever we adopted the 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 standards for large projects through site plan review, um, on page twenty-nine, item thirteen says, where feasible, the Special Permit Granting Authority or the Planning Board may require parking areas to be located to the side or behind buildings so as to provide an appropriate setting for the buildings within the context of the site and neighborhood and allow for parking areas to be shared with adjacent businesses. And then item fourteen on page thirty says, the Special Permit Granting Authority or the Planning Board may prohibit parking within the the required front setback. So I think that ties into, that's newly adopted, and I think that ties into the uh condition number thirteen, and it's also a finding in the in the in the earlier pages of the decision that a two-hundred-foot foot wide buffer strip um should be maintained in that area, and and we can, we can require that. And I also look at the site, and I, I don't understand why there's plenty of room between the building and the side parking area and Lake Shore Center. I don't understand why there can't be a reduction in some of that parking and and add that to that side behind the two-hundred-foot setback line. I think it, and 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 develop that two-hundred-foot uh buffer that 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 is um spelled out in the in the decision. I think it would go a long way to mitigating the impacts to the the NIP, to the residences in that area. And, you know, whether whether or not you agree with it or not, we also have the ability in the site plan review now in large projects to to ask for that. So I, I would like to see that change made, and I think that would go a long way to addressing some of the comments, or at least some of the major comments of the of the residents and and the Abadas, so. Any other board comments at this point or questions? Are there any other board or staff comments, questions? Mr. Jimmy, are you frozen? I'm trying to say something. I can't tell.
I I look that way. Yeah, I'm actually alive. Um, no, I, 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 you, you make a good point, uh, Driscoll. I mean, I think the two-hundred-foot setback has to be decided first before anything else can be talked about.
Okay, if there's no staff or um
Mr. Driscoll, may I ask one question, please?
Sure, Mr. Brennan, go ahead. Attorney, excuse me, Attorney Brennan.
That's fine. Uh, I'm just trying to follow the conversation, and and your your point is that the uh parking within the two-hundred-foot buffer was an amendment to the ordinance subsequent to the nineteen eighty-eight permit, and therefore were governed by the nineteen eighty-eight permit. What what is, is that your point? Uh, I was just making sure.
I'm not a lawyer, so I but I, but I, you know, I I want to acknowledge the fact that we did change the zoning in the Plan Development District to allow for parking to be within fifty feet, and we did it to Marriott. I'm not saying it was the right decision, but it was the decision we made at the time, right? But just because something's in zoning doesn't mean it's our, it's it's approved in the special permit. The special permit should be modified if we want to reduce the parking setback. But in addition to that, in addition to the special permit, whether you agree with that two-hundred-foot setback or not, or whether you agree with the fifty-foot setback, in our zone, in our zoning rewrite that we did through Attorney Bobrowski, in in standards for larger projects, I went over, in in addition to that, there are, there are performance standards for larger projects in section six point three. And in section six point three on page page twenty-nine, item thirteen, it talks about the planning board has the right to ask for parking on the side of the rear of the buildings. And then item fourteen says prohibited in in the front setback line, that the Special Permit Granting Authority or the Planning Board may prohibit parking within the required front setback, which is two hundred feet. So I think between the special permit decision and the the zoning performance standards for larger projects, we have that ability to ask for that landscape plan of that two-hundred-foot to be, to be, to be honored. And I think it would go a long way to mitigating some of the environmental noise, lighting um concerns of the of the NIP and the adjacent properties.
I guess the point that I have to think about is if the if we don't have the benefit of the bylaw amendment for parking within the two-hundred feet because it was subsequent to the eighty-eight permit, then why would we be bound to other uh zoning ordinance amendments or adoptions subsequent to the nineteen eighty-eight permit? I'm just trying to reconcile how that would work, and and we're not gonna resolve that tonight. So uh, in part, I'm thinking out loud with you, and I just want to make sure I understand your position.
Well, I think we have a special permit before us, right?
Correct.
And and we have site standards, and the special permit says we have to abide by the site standards, and we have to abide by the special permit. If if you want to reduce the parking in the special permit to a lower number from the two hundred, then I, what I believe is the special permit should be modified. You should ask for a modification of condition twelve, because zoning allows for that modification. But the special permit created this buffer strip that provides these protections for the Abadas. And then in addition to that, in looking at our site performance standards, we can now eliminate that parking up to the front yard setback line, which is two hundred feet. And I just think that the amount of parking and pavement in the front of this building across from the NIP, I think really detracts from the natural and scenic views of that site and really does impact that area. And our job in these performance standards and looking at the special permit is to make sure that 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 doesn't happen. And there's a tremendous amount of pavement and parking and lighting in in the front of that building that is discouraged or pro- prohibited in the special permit and discouraged and allowed to be prohibited in our, in our, in our um performance standards. So that's my legal opinion. Not so legal.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment?
Sure, Mr. Silva.
Um, the the permit that you're referring to, if you go to page three of it, it talks about that two-hundred-foot buffer and why that came about. And the major driving force for that was its proximity to any residential, and in particular, the Garafalow Garafalo House, which is the house where the um which is across the street from here, which is no longer uh, it's controlled by Clermont, and it is in the hopes in the future to do maybe a commercial use there. But there's, but that was ta- that was a tailored uh condition in order to uh buffer that Garafalo House. So I just kind of want you to keep that in mind uh when you're, when you're thinking about it, is in terms of a two-hundred-foot buffer, and that's part of the reason that contributed to the some of the zoning changes that occurred be uh more recently, where it got dropped down because it didn't have as dramatic an effect in that first two hundred feet. That's why it was allowed to go down to the fifty feet. So I'm not solving that problem tonight, but I just want you to make sure that you you understand what what took place during those public hearings in order for that condition to actually be in there, what it really meant.
On page three, though, it also says, areas served by the buffer include the property used for residential purposes on Route one oh four Pleasant Street, shown in the master plan, now formerly of Garafalo and the land across one oh four. And if you look at, if you look at this, if you look at the master plan that was submitted, all along the entire park, there's that two-hundred-foot buffer that that was, that was submitted to us.
Is it two-hundred-foot building setback? Yeah. Well, you're talking about the original master plan.
Correct.
The buildings with two-hundred-foot setback, just like this building is showing two hundred feet from one oh four. That's what the other wording was, but from one oh four, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve that tonight.
I'm talking to myself, I'm sorry. Is there any other board comment before we open it up to the public? All right, um, are there any members of the public here that would like to speak this evening?
As mentioned at the uh previous site plan, I don't think you were there yet, but we did receive correspondence that was forwarded over to the uh Planning Board. So uh, that information was forwarded uh to you guys as well as um placed on the public comment page on our website.
Shane, I'm I'm having, I'm having a problem with my zone. Could you, can you see if anybody, I can't really see anybody, right?
No, I got you. No, I have, I have one virtual hand raised.
But just as a point of procedure, Mr. Driscoll, given what you've shared with the applicant tonight, before we get into additional public comment, does the applicant want to take that information and ask to continue this?
Yes. I I think that would be the right thing to do uh in light of the position of the board. Of the board tonight, I think we want to look at this plan. And if we're inclined to enable to make any changes, then the next, at the next meeting, the public would be debating a revised plan possibly. About commenting on a revised plan.
Okay, so I, I can see now, but let's, if we can, I mean, I think the hope is that we continue it and have them try to comply with, try. Not try to, but comply with the master plan. I can see now, we have a Janet's iPad. If, if Janet would like to speak, Shane, can you unmute her? We'll try to.
Mister Chair, procedurally, if they're asking to continue it, then I, I. We're gonna have public comment on an application or a plan that may be modified. I'm just trying to keep this moving along that I think the applicant has said they'd like to continue it and come back with a revised plan.
I think I tend to agree with Mister Rully on this one. Uh, sounds like there could be a radical change to what is proposed, so. We kind of be wasting both the public and the applicant's time taking comment on what's. Probably doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. How does the rest of the board feel at this point?
I also agree.
Okay.
They're gonna be changing, changing revising the play. That we should see what they're gonna be doing and then. Reevaluate.
I think uh. I agree that we should move uh to another date. But I also would recommend that the uh. That the applicant and the staff sit down and. Work this out before. We have another meeting.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we can't, we can't. We can't tell the residents the abutis, the, the people of town that were, were, were. Relying on the nineteen eighty eight special permit or the permit that created this, 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 this plan development. And then ignore key components of it. And I think that's, you know, that, that's where a lot of the. Abutis have drawn us, us to. To really look into that. So I, I think that should be addressed. Okay, so do we have a, a date in mind, Mister Lovett?
So just for upcoming dates, we have November fifteenth, December sixth and December twentieth. And we haven't finalized any twenty twenty four decision uh. Dates yet, so.
Um, I'd request the December sixth date and, you know, based on meeting with staff, we may have to. Get an update at that point in time.
Yeah. I personally would not vote in favor of December sixth. Uh, I think putting. These two together was risky tonight. And I think it's gonna be worse next time. They're both coming back with. For significant uh hearings.
Well, I'm not, I'm not part of that other one, but. Have they even submitted engineering yet? I mean, that, that, that may, that may. Require significant reviews. That might just be an update.
That, that will be. That meeting, I believe.
Yeah, just, just as. Yeah, that one, that one does have engineering plans. So I, I'll leave, I'll leave it up to the board's comfort for the next three meetings.
I mean, I think we should. Try to keep it on track. I know we tried to keep these two big projects on separate nights, but if it, it's up to the board. I, I'd be okay with it. I know, Michael. You're not, but I, I just, I. I think they're both big projects with a lot of engineering and one of them may fall through and it'd be nice to, to continue with the other one, you know?
I mean, it's fair enough. Just, I think. Could go fine, could, uh, could wind up getting out here at, you know, eleven o'clock and that's kind of hard for members of the public to uh. Asking a lot of residents.
Mr. O'Brien, as, as a general question, uh. Is it? Uh, does your office still have access to the nineteen eighty eight file? In its entirety with all the plans that were submitted?
Um, I'll, I'll be completely honest, it would probably be over at the Old Town Hall. I would, I, I can't make a definitive statement that. It's there or not.
Well, I, I have everything.
And I think, I think, I think to be fair too, though, we, we also have the discretion. To ask for it. The parking not to be in the two hundred foot based on current zoning. So I think that we also need to be mindful of that. And I would, I would hope that the parking would be moved out of that two hundred foot, so. All right, so do we?
November fifteenth. December sixth or December twentieth?
Mister Lovett, do you want us to put you on for November fifteenth and you can at least give a status update at that point? And if you're ready for the sixth, we might have a better idea then. About twelve, six. Do you want to go? I mean, it's. Two weeks away. Do you wanna? Go to the fifteenth?
Good to go for the sixth, and if they're not ready to go on the sixth, they go to the twentieth.
Yeah, I think the sixth is probably more realistic.
All right, do we have a motion by the board to move this to twelve, six at six thirty?
So moved.
Do a second.
Second, I'd like to make one comment, though. I, I. You know, the overriding thing that isn't spoken about, at least in my mind, is the fact that. The. What we've heard from the residents is their biggest fear. Is the lake. And what this project could do to the lake and what the entire project could do to the lake. I would just encourage the applicant to. Understand that and go out of your way in terms of trying to. Modify this project so that. We, we can minimize any impact. On the surrounding area. If that means a two hundred foot buffer. Uh, whether you are required to or not, you do it. If that means putting in previous pavement. Um, again, you just go out of your way to try to make sure. That uh, you're, you're doing good for, for yourself in terms of hotel and for the town as a whole, because. Once you build it, it's gonna be there a while and we have to, we will have to live with it, so. That's all.
Oh, you're muted, Pat. But we do have a motion in a second.
You can read my lips, huh?
I can.
Um, all right, so we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Mister Ross?
Yes.
Mister Jimmy?
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Let me ask, I promise it won't go to eleven, Mister McDonald, all right?
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have um. A minor modification under item three. This is two ten Broad Street. A facade material modification. This was a, a site plan that was approved on January eighteenth, twenty twenty three. We last met with the applicant on October fourth, twenty twenty three. So um. Is somebody here from the, the um. Applicants team?
Good evening, members of the board. Chairman Patel.
Hey, Mister Patel, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Go ahead, sir.
Chairman Patel with uh. Two ten Broad Street. Um, I'm just gonna share my screen real quick. So last time we had talked with you guys, we wanted to. Keep the facade. And you wanted to see a different material for that. Facade, so. The architect was proposing. Uh, synthetic slat roofing finish. And this is how it would. And the other option we have. Is. Some metal roof finish.
Mister Geller?
Um. First, first, I, I want to commend you on going back and actually putting thought into this. I, I think what you, what you proposed into the building is, is. A lot, a lot better than what was originally done. I like that you added the stone on the bottom. I think that's a great, great addition. I like the overhangs. I, I think I personally like the. The slate, the synthetic slate finish on the top. A little better. Um, I think it'll blend a little nicer with what's gonna be hopefully built behind it. Um, my only comment is. That light fixture that you have hanging on the bottom in the corner in the awning.
Yep, we can remove that. I think.
I, I, it, it just really doesn't belong. I think if you were gonna do any type of lighting would be. Under the canopy, but I, I do, I do appreciate you going back and taking the time to look at this. I think it is a, it'll be a vast improvement to the building.
Thank you.
So my recommend, my recommendation would be to go with the uh. Slate roof.
Other um. Staff comments, questions or opinions or um?
Yeah, we have no issue with their request. I think it just, but we reiterated with the last meeting is that. Um, I guess to Mister Geller's point is that we just wanted to make sure that any changes reflect. The site plan and the photometric plans that were presented to the board. Um, but I, I don't see an, an issue with either material. I, I would leave that up to the discretion of the board.
Okay, any other board members have any questions or comments from Mister Patel? So Mister Patel, do you have a preferred, do you have a preferred option?
No, I think we definitely like this uh slate roofing finish as well.
Um, Mister Rully, with your um. Vision to reality, do you think the slate is, is a welcome addition? In the stone?
Well, I think anything's an improvement. Um, I don't, I don't see this to be inconsistent with what. What we're doing um.
Any, any other board uh members like to weigh in? So Mister Patel, if, if this is your preferred and it seems to be. The, the board's preferred based on the few comments we've had, is this um the one you'd like us to vote on?
Uh, yes, please.
Uh, and, and just, I don't have the old renderings, but is the stone a new addition as well in this minor modification? Is that an upgrade? It is Mister Geller?
I, I believe so, because I don't remember seeing it in the last.
Good, okay. All right, yeah, all right. So um, do we have a motion to um? Accept this minor modification for the, the slate um. And the stone?
I'm just, I'm the chair. I, I believe we did accept it as a, we accepted it was a minor previously, right? Did we already get that out of the way?
That is correct. We accepted that at the October um. The, the first October meeting, so we would just be voting on, yes, the slate roof or the modification itself.
All right, I apologize. All right, so thank you, Mister McDonald. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the um, the slate option with the stone? As a mi, as, as the minor modification?
Tom, I'll make a motion to accept the uh. Option number one on the drawing submitted tonight with the. Stone facade on the bottom, the ephesum in the middle and the. Synthetic slate. Roof on top.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Hi, Mister McDonald?
Second.
So Mister Geller, Mister Geller made the motion, Mister McDonald made the second. So I'll start with you, Mister Jimmy.
Yes.
Mister Geller?
Uh, ju- just one comment on the motion, I'm sorry, and uh, remove that hanging light corner.
Okay. Mister Geller?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm, Mister Ross, did I get you?
No.
Mister, Mister Ross?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I think you voted twice, Michael. It, it only counts once. So, and I'm a yes, so it's unanimous.
I won't, I won't have a six zero, so don't worry.
All right.
First of all, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mister Patel.
Thank you.
Um, so next up. We have um, some plans that were submitted uh for recent projects. We approved one forty five Winter Street. This is a minor modification request. I see Mister Dias is here. If you want to share your screen, Mister Dias.
Absolutely, um, we, we can walk us through the request. Absolutely, let me just pull this up. I think. That should be the one. And screen sharing is paused, so that didn't work. All right, let's try it again.
So looking at the request earlier, it was in regards to curving, uh, removing some islands and replant, relocation of some trees, correct?
That is correct, yes. Um, for some reason, it's just not coming up for me right now. Let me try this.
Do you really have four dogs, Mister Dias?
I really do, yeah. I got, uh, this is dad. Mom and two puppies.
We will uh place those in the minutes.
I'll give you names if you need them.
We need name and address.
All right, uh, so can everybody see the screen now?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, so um. For the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strongpoint Engineering. Uh, he is tonight representing the applicant for one forty five uh Winter Street. Um, as you mentioned, Mister Chair, we were before you earlier this year for a site plan approval on this, which we were successfully granted. Um, and now that we're into the construction, I, I think, and I'm sure you folks have seen us all over the place. Um, it's just the landscape that we're in right now in the industry is really kind of causing some. Some modifications of things as we move through and start assigning monetary value to things. Um, so I'm gonna jump around a little bit. The first thing that we've asked for a modification on. Is simply the method of creating the concrete curving around the sidewalk. Uh, the approved plan calls for precast concrete. We would just like to form and pour them monolithically with the sidewalks. Um, realistically, there's, it, it's really the same product. At the end of the day, there, there's no. Structural difference, so to speak, between the two options. Um, so you know, I, I think it accomplishes the same intent. Of what was originally proposed and approved. Um, the second modification that we're asking for is you see these areas here that are hatched. Uh, this one where my cursor is. Down here. Over here at the opening, um, a small landscape area here. On this side and back here. Uh, those were previously approved as landscape islands. Uh, we are requesting to remove them for two reasons. One. Um, just for ease of being able to plow this site and not have so many obstacles in the way uh with the snowfall. And uh, two, just to help trucks maneuver through the site, less obstacles for, for things to deal with and, and, and things like that. Uh, we have, um, I believe we end up. Relocating two of the proposed trees. We remove one, but we still have more trees than what's required under the bylaw. In order to accomplish that. Um, and then the last modification that we're asking for is with respect to the retaining walls. Uh, so when we had originally come in. For this project, we requested a waiver to construct modular block retaining walls rather than poured concrete. Um, and the board had indicated at the time that they weren't in favor of that. They wanted the concrete. Um, so we agreed to it. Uh, the issue that we're having now that we're putting, you know, price tags on these things and moving forward with construction. The modular block retaining walls are, well, let me back that up. Let me tackle this the other way. The poured concrete retaining walls as approved. Are astronomically expensive. They have quickly become pound for pound. The most expensive aspect of this project. Whereas we are being quoted in less than half the cost. For the modular block retaining walls that we had originally requested. Um, structurally speaking, from an engineering perspective, there is no benefit to one or the other. I think it's a matter of preference. Um, so respectfully, we are asking. To be allowed to go back. To our original request for the modular block retaining walls in place of the poured concrete. Um, so that, aside from that, nothing changes with regards to location, uh, with regard to heights, anything like that.
So Mister Dias, I. I, I'm just trying to recall what, what happened. I, I know that, that. Poured concrete wall. You had, you had, you agreed to veneer that because of the height and to kind of soften the look of it. So would these concrete blocks? Have any type of veneer on them or are they just like stamped concrete?
Yeah, what we're proposing is, and we have a detail here. Uh, there, I believe they're two by four or somewhere in that nature. They have like a rough hewn finish on the face of them. So they, you know, they mimic a veneered wall type of look. Um, the other thing that I would note to you is that the face of the walls. All point into, well, the face of this wall, at least I should say. Points into the site with the high side being up here. So if you're on Winter Street or you're on the high side. The, your view of this wall at least will be skewed by the building. And if you recall, Mister Chairman, we agreed to plant a substantial number of trees along Romney Road. Uh, which will further obscure your view of that wall.
Okay, thank you. And the, and the um. The way you pour on the concrete, that's essentially gonna be a concrete curb anyway. It's just gonna be all, it's one, one pour instead of setting your concrete curbing and then pouring inside it, correct?
That is correct. That is correct, yes.
And the trees, you said, where are the trees being relocated to?
Uh, let me go to my, I, I did, we did offer up a revised landscape plan as well.
It would be nice if they'd be in the area of Winter Street to give some additional street screening to those residences and that residential area.
You know, i- i- don't quote me. I believe this tree and this tree are our two relocated trees. But we have no issue relocating them anywhere along Winter Street, that's fine.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that's sufficient, I'm just, all right. Um, board questions for Mr. Dias?
I just have a question for Mr. Tansy about the structural integrity of. The difference between the concrete and blocks, that's all.
There is um no difference, uh, with the structural integrity between. A concrete. Um, cast in place wall and, and a concrete block wall. As long as either of them are designed properly, they are structurally sound, sound structures.
Right, um, if I may, just to build on that and something I should have mentioned earlier. In each case, whether it be the poured concrete wall or the modular block wall. We, prior to construction, we will have to produce structural drawings stamped by a structural engineer. And they need to be reviewed and approved by your building inspector. So even if the, this board does allow a change in material. The mechanism for the design um safeguards are still in place and remain unchanged.
M- Mr. Geller, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think you had a lot of um input on the. Design.
I was, I was the one that was, that wanted really the, a solid pour. Um.
And more, and more of the veneer.
We've done it both ways, so. Um. I, I'm, I'm fine with it. They do have to be structurally engineered and, and approved from building department, so.
Okay. And Mr. Dias, you're saying, I mean, just looking at the layout of the wall, most of that wall, I mean, half of that wall's behind the building, correct?
That's right. This wall here, this whole half up to basically where my cursor is here is hidden by the building anyway. Uh, this side, we do have some more screening, tree screening in the front. Um, I will say this wall here will face outward, uh, because the basin is lower. But we, I believe this lot is very much treed. Through here, and this lot is in the same zone, which would, you know, presumably um allow a similar type of development there anyway.
What's the height of that wall on the back corner? The, the, the corner furthest from Winter Street?
Further, this one over here?
How much is exposed to the neighbor on that side?
I was a maximum, I, I believe it, you know what? Hold on, I have the other plan right here, and let me just pull it up so I don't say something dumb. As I've been.
And was that, was that veneered in the original plan, or was that just concrete?
That was going to be the concrete veneer as well.
It was veneered on the neighbor side, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And again, you, you know, we would use the same block. Wow, with the, the rough hewn stone finish in this location, so. I'm looking at this wall right here at its tallest point. I've got a seven foot wall um at the back of the infiltration basin.
And that, is that the, is that a smaller wall? I'm just looking at it on the screen. Is that a much smaller wall than to the front of the building?
Uh, this one, my highest point is right here. I've got a top of ninety-three, a bottom of. Eighty-six and a half, so that's about six and a half feet right here. So they're, they're comparison within about, within about six inches of each other.
But, but the wall closest to, to Winter Street. That's, that's seen from the interior of the site. The wall, the, the wall seen, the, the wall in the back is seen from the exterior of the site on the neighbors' property?
Uh, yes, I believe the name I have here is Fernando, and on this one, we have Richard. Um, there is in this location a covered, a covered storage area right here. Um, and I believe this is treed. In fact, I've got the Google Earth up, I can, I can pull that up.
Would it, would it, would it be okay? It just, would it be? The wall that's, that's an internal wall that, that isn't, uh, that isn't, that isn't affecting any residences, I think. Would be fine to be blocked, but does it make sense to keep the, the wall that is facing the residential structures, the nicer veneered wall?
Um, you know, I would argue no. I think the, the veneer. Really is just a matter of personal preference. You know, it's very possible to put side by side. The people who live. Saying this house may pick the modular block at the end of the day. Um, that I think it's a matter of preference visually. Um, and I know, um, you know, obviously cost is a factor, and the other thing I know. It really brought this up for my client is that the project that's being constructed right here. Less than a, a mile away from us, he's the one who noted that they're using the modular block walls that we were originally told we can't use. Which is what brought us through this whole discussion.
Well, that, that's all in an industrial, in a business B zone. It doesn't, it doesn't abut any residential properties, correct?
No, I have not done the research, I don't know.
Just, just, just a point, um, this property is in a business B. And that property is in a, I think it's their southern business district. But I don't think we have any wa- wall type, we don't have any stone wall requirements, I guess, in terms of. That aspect of it. I think in terms of abutting residential, I think it's just some sort of aspect of screening. That is what we have in our uh zoning ordinance.
Yes, and I do.
So, so there is gonna be, there has to be a ten foot, a ten foot screened buffer between the property. Is that gonna be properly screened?
Yes, it is. In fact, I'm going to my landscape page right now, and this whole area through here. Is where we propose to screen to the residential.
What, what type of, what type of evergreens are those?
Uh, let me go back. These appear to be. The American arborvitae with a six foot height. Six foot planting, they grow to about fifteen.
Aren't those the ones that are eaten by the, uh, the deer, the Americans? I mean, if, if we're gonna change the wall type, we better off to go the, through your placata, the, the green giants that grow, the western red cedars that grow faster and they're deer resistant. I mean, they're not any, they're not any more money.
I, I. I'm s- I. I, I, I think the, the current. Type in the planned schedule that the board previously approved, I think is, is still appropriate for this project. I, I just, I just rather than go outside.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, if, if we're changing a wall type. And I'm okay with it, I just don't want it to i- i- impact the, you know, this. The neighbors were at a public hearing and they believe they're getting a, a certain wall type facing them, you know?
Uh, if I may, so just, uh, I think the. Arborvitae can be a problem with deer. I mean, I think there may be a resistance uh. Type of it, but I think whatever, whatever you choose, or whatever is approved, you should check to make sure they're deer resistant. Because you look around, drive through this town, you see the arborvitae chewed up to uh five, six foot level, so.
Yeah, I just wanna make a point as well, too, as part of the conditions of the decision, if there's any. Landscaping that is, of course, dead or affected by any sort of. Animal, you know, uh, we would subject the applicant to replace it um based on what was approved.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate, so, all right. Any other board questions or comments at this point? Do we have any issues with the islands being removed of the, of the sidewalk? Right, and I do, I do appreciate, you know, I know at the last meeting, we sprung the. The four, the fourteen pine trees on you, Mr. Dias, so I appreciate you incorporating those into the plan as well.
Yeah, yeah, they're lined right along here. And they're gonna help, obviously, screen, you know, this portion of the wall as well, so that's, that's a win-win.
So if, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to accept this as a minor modification?
So moved.
I'll second.
So by Mr. Jemian, second by Mr. McDonald? Um, I'll take the roll. Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you all for your time.
No, no, hold on, hold on, hold on.
That was the big vote.
So now do we have a mo- we accept it as a minor, not a major? So, so do, do we have a um, a motion to approve the uh minor modifications as presented on the plan?
So moved.
By Mr. McDonald, do a se- by Mr. Jemian, do a second?
In a second.
By Ms. Rojas, any discussion? Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, I'm always getting mad at myself.
That's all right, thank you.
Have a night, everybody.
Okay, I, you know, we have other business. I'm okay with voting on the September six minutes. I haven't had a chance to look at them. One, one comment I would make. Um, on some last minutes, just, I was looking at some minutes recently, looking for them. And I see that um, Mr. Healy is listed as Mr. Hurley a number of times. So, uh, just, I don't know if that's the case in these minutes, because I haven't even looked at them, but just going forward if. Whoever's doing the minutes, we make them Mr. Mr. Healy and not Mr. Hurley.
Mr. Healy. All right, I can, I can, if you want a condition.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I haven't even, I, to be honest with you, I haven't even looked at these minutes for the September sixth, but I just, the last couple of minutes, I should have brought that up, so.
I, I can make any corrections from Healy to Hurley, or Haley to Healy, Hurley.
He looks like a Mr. Hurley.
So, yeah, those could be corrected as uh, as you just mentioned.
I mean, I, I didn't read the September six minutes, but if the other people have and they wanna vote on them, I'm fine with that. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we wanna hold off to the next meeting? Has everybody read them?
Hold off.
Okay, we'll hold off on those. Is that okay, Mr. O'Brien, to next meeting?
You do whatever you want. Um, I can kind of bring that up in terms of board items for the next meeting as well, um.
What, what's on, what's on the next meeting?
Um, I think we have a very light agenda. I think we have probably a request for a minor modification. I'll probably bring up dates for the next. Next year, um, and probably minutes, so um, I'm. That's what I have on the top of my head right now, um, but yeah, it's less, not two hours and thirty minutes.
All right, wait a minute, it is one issue, though. When, when is Thanksgiving this year?
Uh.
Thursday of this month.
The third Thursday of November, uh, the twenty-third.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
The fifty, so our next meeting will be November fifteenth.
Oh, good, I, 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 I just. Thought I was, I just thought I had a conference on the, on the um. On the sixth after scheduling all these hearings, but I, my conference is the, the Wednesday after Thanksgiving, which would be the twenty-ninth, so I'm all right.
Okay.
All right, do we have any um reports from Mr. Ruly or from Mr. O'Brien? Are we good?
I, I just have one thing. I did send out an email, and this will be a healthy reminder, the uh, the fall workshops for the Citizen Planning Training Collaborative. Are available, um, the town is willing to pay, um, if any would like to attend, there is uh various. Webinars that exist starting next week, I believe. Um, but if you could get. Let us know if you're interested in participating in any of these webinars. They go from uh November to January. Uh, we'd be happy to sign you up and uh cover the costs. So just let us know. Um, sooner than later, so we could uh have Nicole um fill out those.
We actually need to know by the end of this week for accounting purposes.
Are they during the day or in the afternoon?
They are at night. So please, just, I, I sent over an email. I can send a, a, the same email over again, just so you can look them over, but they are at night. Uh, they are all at webinars, um, so just please let us know.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Shane. Bob, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just, I mean, you made reference to. Vision reality is my plan, it's not my plan. I mean, vision reality is the culmination of all the planning that the town has done. Um, we're the reality to the vision, so just. I, I don't want, there, there's been some comments from people that this is Bob Ruly's plan, it's not Bob Ruly's plan, it's the community's plan.
I, I didn't mean it like that, I apologize. You, you're the one keeping us on track, I should have said, so. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, do we have um anything else? Any board member comments? If not, do we motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Remember, so Jemian, do a second?
Second.
Mr. Geller? Take the roll, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Mr. Jemian?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everyone.